Hello and welcome to this public hearing presentation from the South Atlantic Fishery Management Council. My name is Mike Schmidtke and I'm a fishery scientist with the council. Today, we'll be talking through and asking for your comments on the Comprehensive Acceptable Biological Catch Control Rule Amendment. I'll start off today's presentation by giving a brief overview of the council amendment process and which stocks and areas are affected by this amendment. After that, I'll discuss some of the background information for the ABC Control Rule Amendment, followed by the proposed actions, potential timing, and wrap up with how you can provide your comments to the council before addressing questions and passing to our council chair to open the floor for comments. Public hearings are an important part of the council rulemaking process where members of the public are invited to provide input on an amendment before it is considered for final approval. The council will review the public's comments and consider them in making their final decisions. The ABC Control Rule Amendment affects multiple fishery management plans, specifically the Dolphin and Wahoo, Snapper grouper, and Golden Crab FMPs. The Dolphin Wahoo FMP covers the U.S. Exclusive Economic Zone, or EEZ, from Maine through the Florida Keys. The South Atlantic Council is the lead for managing this fishery, but does so in cooperation with the Mid-Atlantic and New England councils. The Snapper grouper and Golden Crab FMPs cover the South Atlantic Council's jurisdiction, which is the EEZ from North Carolina through the Florida Keys. Next, we'll go through some background information surrounding the decisions being considered in this amendment. The ABC Control Rule, which is largely addressed in Action 1, has two key components that will be at the center of our discussion today. The first is risk, which is clarified as management's accepted risk of overfishing occurring. This term has a couple layers underneath it that all come into play when applying a control rule. In one sense, risk of overfishing is the probability or percentage chance that annual fishing removals exceed an overfishing limit. In another sense, it is also a type of cost-benefit consideration. When you think about the biology of a certain type of fish and the type of fishing that will affect it, risk considers that stock's ability to be resistant to overfishing and to bounce back if overfishing occurs temporarily. These types of decisions are the purview of the council. The next term is uncertainty. When we talk about this, we're referring to uncertainty about scientific estimates, including biological information, fishery monitoring information, stock assessment results, and projections of future catch. Evaluating uncertainty is part of the scientific process and thus is the purview of the council's scientific and statistical committee. Next, I'll talk through what an acceptable biological catch, or ABC, control rule is. ABC is the maximum amount of fish that can be annually harvested after accounting for scientific uncertainty and management risk tolerance. ABC is recommended by the scientific and statistical committee and is the basis for federal fisheries management. All of the fishery limits, like annual catch limits or season lengths, as well as on the water measures like minimum size limits, trip limits, or bag limits, are created within the context of making sure annual catch does not exceed ABC. The ABC Control Rule is the method for developing an ABC based on scientific information. So the control rule is really our bridge between science and management. The control rule defines how risk and uncertainty should be evaluated and used to estimate ABC. The basic formula used to derive ABC is the overfishing limit, or OFL, minus a buffer that accounts for scientific uncertainty and management risk tolerance. The control rule sets the rules for how this buffer is evaluated. The current ABC Control Rule is applied to stocks that have been assessed through the following process. First, a stock assessment is completed and reviewed by the SSC to determine if it is the best scientific information available. If the SSC approves the assessment, they then evaluate four tiers of assessment characteristics. First, the type of information the assessment uses to describe biomass and exploitation. Second, how uncertainty is characterized. Third, whether the stock is overfished or experiencing overfishing. And fourth, a productivity and susceptibility analysis, or PSA, that gives a qualitative measure of how vulnerable the stock is to overfishing based on its biology, behavior, and characteristics of the fishery. Evaluations under each of these tiers corresponds to a percentage adjustment to the accepted probability of overfishing. This is denoted as P*. P* starts at the value that gives us the overfishing limit, which is 50%. It is reduced from there by the percentage adjustments that come out of the tier evaluations. The adjusted P* is then applied to the assessment and uncertainty information to estimate the ABC. ABCs for stocks that do not have full assessments are derived by applying data limited methods based on the amount and type of data that are available for that species. If it has enough information for the Level 2 model to be applied, that model is used. If not, then it's evaluated for Level 3 and so forth down the line you see on this slide. However, the concern that the SSC has expressed with this part of the control rule is that only a small, specific group of data limited models are included. The number of data limited models has grown a lot over the last 15 years. An SSC workgroup examined the wide array of models available today and determined there really isn't one or a few best models that could be broadly applied. They recommended evaluating models on a species-by-species basis, which would require changes to this part of the control rule to give them that flexibility. So the council is taking action to change the ABC Control Rule through this amendment with the following goals in mind. First, the council would like to clarify its role in determining management risk. As you may have noticed in the description of the current control rule, right now determination of risk is conducted by the SSC as they derive P*. Even though, as defined earlier in the presentation, risk is really intended to be a management decision made by the council. Next, the SSC expressed a desire to be able to adjust uncertainty measures for assessments when they determine it is necessary. Under the current control rule, the SSC must choose to take or leave the uncertainty as estimated by a stock assessment. In some situations, the SSC may feel that some numbers are the best that can be estimated with current information, but should have a bit more uncertainty tied to them because of missing information on key parts of the stock or fishery. This amendment also considers expansion of the number of data limited methods that can be used as part of the control rule as discussed previously. Finally, this amendment considers incorporation of phases and carryovers, which are management tools that can provide some additional flexibility, but must be defined in the control rule to be used. Next, we will go through the actions being considered in this amendment. Changes made through the ABC Control Rule Amendment would impact management plans for Dolphin Wahoo, Golden Crab, and Snapper grouper. The amendment considers three general actions: addressing modification of the ABC Control Rule, phasing in of ABC changes, and carryover of unharvested catch. Carryover is addressed through two separate actions. The first determines which stocks are eligible for carryover and the limitations on carryover amounts. The second addresses the process for implementing carryover in a timely manner. Action 1 addresses changing the ABC Control Rule. In presenting each alternative, there is some summary language followed by information on how risk tolerance depicted through P* will be determined. And finally, application of the control rule to overfished stocks. While it is common practice for ABC to be determined by a rebuilding plan for overfished stocks, this is not overtly specified in the current control rule and one of the goals of this action is to more directly state how these situations are handled. I won't spend too much time talking about this aspect, but in short, both of the other two alternatives state that ABC for overfished stocks would be determined by the most current iteration of the rebuilding plan and not by the control rule as it's applied to stocks that are not overfished. Alternative 1 would be maintaining the current control rule as described earlier in the presentation. Alternative 2 removes the tiers language and really changes the whole structure of the control rule, replacing it with assessment categories based on uncertainty characterization. These categories are shown in Table 2 of the public hearing document and include giving the SSC the ability to adjust or estimate assessment uncertainty when deemed necessary. P* would be specified by the council using a stock risk rating and relative biomass information, which we'll talk about more in the next couple of slides. Finally, the approach to data limited stocks would be revised. Instead of the current group of methods, a standing workgroup of the SSC would work through the unassessed stocks to determine the most appropriate method for each and then apply that method to estimate ABC. The SSC would no longer be restricted to a set group of methods when coming up with ABC for these unassessed stocks. The stock risk rating is a way to qualitatively evaluate a stock's risk of experiencing overfishing. The stock would be evaluated based on biological, human dimension, and environmental attributes and assigned an overall rating that denotes it as low, medium, or high risk of overfishing. Biological attributes would come from the most recent stock assessment. Recommendations on human dimension and environmental attributes would be provided by the SSC and advisory panel and then the council would determine the attribute scores and final risk rating. By incorporating all of these different attributes of the stock and fishery, the council would get some indication of how likely overfishing is to occur and how detrimental overfishing can be for a given stock. The stock risk rating would be paired with the relative biomass from the most recent assessment to determine P*. Table 3 of the public hearing document shows how the different biomass categories and risk ratings correspond to P* levels. The big takeaway using this method is that in order for the council to assume greater risk and harvest at a higher level that is closer to the overfishing limit, the stock needs to have a lower risk rating or a higher biomass. If a stock is really close to being overfished, the council would fish at a lower, less risky level. Similarly, if a stock has characteristics that put it at high risk of experiencing overfishing, such as being slow growing yet highly desired by the commercial or recreational fisheries, then the council would also fish at a lower level. Alternative 2 also includes some subalternative options. These can be thought of as add-ons or enhancements to the process I just described, and they are not mutually exclusive. That means that preferred alternative 2 can function with or without any combination of these subalternatives. Subalternative 2A would change the biomass thresholds used with the stock risk rating to get P*. This means that in order for the council to accept more risk and allow fishing at a higher level, the stock's biomass would have to be 10% higher than it would need to be without this subalternative. This lowers the chance of a higher ABC, but also lowers the chance that overfishing will occur. Subalternative 2B would allow the council flexibility to deviate from the default P* levels I showed in the last slide as long as P* does not exceed 50%. Subalternative 2C would add the ability for the council to request ABC recommendations from the SSC as both annual values, which are the current norm, and a constant value over five years. Right now, standard practice is for the SSC to recommend ABC as the highest number of fish that can be sustainably harvested based on the population size. This leads to different ABCs from year to year as the population fluctuates towards the biomass that produces maximum sustainable yield. Public and advisory comments on several recent amendments have asked for a more constant value that may not maximize the harvest in each year, but would allow consistency and the ability to plan for harvest limits in future years. This subalternative would essentially have the SSC give the council two recommended projections of future harvest for ABC, one with different year-to-year values and one with a constant value for all of the years. This would then become a standard part of the control rule. The council would be able to pick from either of these recommendations when changing the catch limits following a stock assessment. Alternative 3 is somewhat of a hybrid between Alternatives 1 and 2. It keeps some of the structure and terminology of the current control rule, but does have some modifications. Instead of the SSC including stock status and the productivity and susceptibility analysis as part of the control rule, the council would be more involved by selecting the initial P* value between 30 and 50%. The SSC would then adjust this P* value down from that initial level based on assessment information and uncertainty characterization. ABCs for unassessed and overfished stocks would be determined using the same methods as proposed for preferred alternative 2. Subalternative 3A would have the SSC give ABC recommendations as both year-to-year values and a constant value over several years, just like what I described for subalternative 2C. So, under alternative 3, the council would be more involved in determining risk than the current control rule as they would have discretion of setting the initial P* level. However, like alternative 1 and unlike preferred alternative 2, this alternative does not give the SSC the ability to adjust uncertainty of assessment results before applying the P* to projections of future catch. I know that was a lot of information for a single action. To try to help condense it all into one place, this slide is just an abbreviated summary of all of the Action 1 alternatives and subalternatives that you can reference in the slides included in the briefing book as you prepare your comments. Also, to try to narrow down feedback that could help inform the council, I listed some questions here that you could respond to when providing your comments. Do you agree with the council's current preferred control rule, which is alternative 2? If alternative 2 or 3 is selected, should any subalternatives be added on to those? Should the biomass requirements for higher levels of fishing under alternative 2 be more conservative? Should the council have the ability to change from default risk levels under alternative 2? And finally, should it become a standard part of the control rule for the SSC to give recommended ABCs as both year-to-year and constant values? Next, we'll talk through Action 2. Phases are the gradual adjusting to a new ABC over multiple years. To describe this in a little bit of a different context, I'll use an analogy of cookies. Let's say your typical diet is nine cookies per day. You then step on the scale to assess your health and you see there's a problem. So you go to your doctor and they tell you that you need to cut back on the cookies. They'd recommend a limit of three per day, but definitely no more than five. So you jump right into this new diet and on day one, you're staring at the cookie jar like this. Going from nine down to three is a big change. So you then decide to phase it in to make it a bit easier on yourself. First, doing a week of five cookies per day since that's the number Doc said you absolutely can't go over. Then you ratchet that down week by week and decide that for a little extra health, your long-term cookie diet will be two cookies per day. This is similar to what we're talking about in Action 2 with phasing in changes to the ABC. Action 2 has two subactions. The first subaction addresses what stocks phases can be applied to. Alternative 2 reserves phases of ABC decreases to only be used when the change in ABC is larger than a certain level set by one of the subalternatives. Alternative 3 would require that in order for an ABC decrease to be phased in, the population needs to be above a size threshold. Subalternative 3A would set that threshold as the stock needs to not be overfished. Subalternative 3B would set that threshold to be more conservative, requiring the population to be close to the size that allows the maximum level of fishing that population can sustainably handle. Subaction 2.2 addresses how long it can take for phases to be completed. These alternatives denote the maximum timeframes for phases of ABC decreases. So you get more flexibility with alternative 2 than you do with alternative 3 than you do with alternative 4. If approved, phases under each of those time schedules are subject to the requirements that you see in this table. So the council could temporarily set an ABC that is greater than the level recommended by the SSC during the phase-in years, but it cannot ever be higher than the overfishing limit. Whenever a phase-in occurs, the projections of future catch that are the basis for ABC have to be reestimated so they account for a higher level of harvest in the first one to three years however long the phase-in is occurring. This example walks through what a phase-in could look like under different timeframes. In this example, the old ABC was 50,000 pounds and the SSC has just reviewed an assessment and recommended new ABCs, starting with year one being 25,000 pounds. The effective ABCs are the temporary values allowed under the phase-in rules of subaction 2.2. The yellow highlighted values are based on the revised catch projections that account for phase-in being used. The big takeaways from this example are the longer a phase-in takes, the lower the long-term harvest value will be. But also, a longer phase-in does allow some additional harvest in the first few years of new limits. And here are some example questions that can help narrow down what the council should do. The biggest question for this action is whether phases should be included as one of the council's management tools. If so, should phases only apply for big changes and how big is a big change? Should phases only apply to stocks that are not overfished or stocks that are closer to the size that maximizes the fishing yield? Finally, what should the maximum allowed time be for phases? Actions 3 and 4 are a bit of a package deal as they both address carryovers. To illustrate what we mean by carryover, we're going to talk about cookies again. We come back to Doc's recommendation of three cookies per day, but no more than five. So on day one, you eat your recommended limit of three cookies. But day two, you get a little busy with work and you only eat two cookies. Day three, you say to yourself, "I missed out on a cookie yesterday and eating one extra won't put me over that max amount of five that Doc told me, so I'll eat an extra today." Then you eat four cookies on day three. Day four, you went fishing all day and forgot the cookies at home, so you didn't have any that day. Day five, you decide to have a couple extra since you missed out yesterday, but you still limit yourself to the five cookie max that Doc recommended. In that example, you carried over uneaten cookies from one day to the next. Actions 3 and 4 address the potential for unharvested amounts of allowed catch to be carried over from one year to the next. Under subaction 3.1, alternative 2, which would allow carryover, there are subalternatives that would define which stocks and sectors are allowed to carry over unharvested portions of their annual catch limit, or ACL. Any number of these subalternatives can be selected and combined to set the rules for when carryovers are allowed. The base requirements that would be in place regardless of the subalternatives are that the stock must be assessed and its status must be not overfished and overfishing not occurring. Subalternative 2A would additionally require that the biomass must be close to the level that maximizes sustainable fishing yield. Subalternative 2B would require that to be eligible for carryover, a sector must have experienced a recent ACL-related closure that may have been too early. Subalternative 2C would require under-harvest in a long-term context. So the sum of landings over a three-year period must be less than the sum of ACLs in the same three years. Subalternative 2D would not allow carryovers to happen during a phase-in. Subalternative 2E would require that stocks eligible for carryover must have both in-season accountability measures that can close the fishery when it hits its harvest limit as well as postseason accountability measures that would lower limits if the fishery catches too much in one year. One thing to highlight here is that even with the base criteria of being assessed and not overfished or overfishing, most South Atlantic stocks would not be eligible for carryover. Then, as you add subalternatives, eligibility becomes even more selective. So in actuality, if carryover were allowed under this amendment, the situations where it could actually be used in our region would be pretty rare. Subaction 3.2 addresses how much unharvested ACL can be carried over from one year to the next. Under alternative 2, total ACL plus carryover needs to be less than the overfishing limit. Under alternative 3, there is an additional requirement that the carryover amount cannot be more than 25% of the sector ACL. Under either alternative 2 or 3, if both sectors are carrying over at the same time and the total amount of carryover hits its maximum limit, then the maximum amount of carryover will be divided between the sectors according to the allocation percentages in the management plan. Action 4 addresses the logistical steps for how the council would implement carryovers if they are allowed. The main point of this action is that when the council sets catch limits following a stock assessment, they will also decide whether carryover will be used for that stock and include that in the management plan with the new catch limits. If the council puts carryover in the management plan, then every year that a stock has under-harvested and is eligible for carryover based on the rules set in subaction 3.1, that under-harvest will automatically carryover to the following year. The council does not have to use carryover, but the time when they make that decision is when they put new catch limits in the management plan through an amendment. Once carryover is in there, it is automatic in qualifying years until the council changes that through another amendment. This slide is a step-by-step summary of how the process I just described would work. You see how a carryover is implemented and if neither sector is eligible due to both harvesting their full ACL or the stock not meeting other conditions, then the ABC and catch limits go back to the values set in the management plan. Now I'll go through a brief example to put a fisheries application to this concept. This slideshow shows the assumptions we're using, but the ones of note are that the OFL is 12,000 pounds, the ABC and total ACL are both 10,000 pounds with a 50/50 sector allocation, and both sectors are approved to carryover when eligible according to the management plan. Here we have some numbers listed for limits and harvest showing different situations. 2023 is a pretty typical standard under-harvest of 1,000 pounds for the commercial sector. That would get carried into 2024 and increase the sector ACL in 2024 from 5,000 to 6,000 pounds. In 2024, the commercial sector is below the temporary ACL level, but above the original ACL, so it has no under-harvest to carryover. The recreational sector does have 500 pounds to carryover. In 2025, there is a commercial overage, so that sector has nothing to carryover. There is a recreational underage of 1,000 pounds below the temporary ACL, but that's only 500 pounds below the original ACL, so that sector can only carryover 500 pounds. 2026 has underages for both sectors. The ACL plus carryover would go over the overfishing limit. So the difference between OFL and ABC, which is 2,000 pounds, is allocated 50,000 pounds. OFL and ABC, which is 2,000 pounds, is allocated 50-50 with 1,000 pounds of carryover to each sector in the next year. In 2027, the commercial sector under-harvests by 2,500 pounds compared to its original ACL, but carrying over that entire amount would go over the overfishing limit, so only 2,000 pounds may be carried over for the commercial sector. And these are the final limits from that example scenario. So as a reminder, here is a summary of the Action Three alternatives defining the eligibility and amounts for carryovers. And here is a summary of Action Four alternatives that would put in the logistical process for implementing carryovers in each of the FMPs that are a part of this amendment: Snapper grouper, Dolphin Wahoo, and Golden Crab. As with the other actions, here are some example questions that can be answered to help focus feedback for the Council. The overriding question here is whether carryovers should be one of the management tools that the Council is allowed to use. If so, should carryovers be limited to stocks that are close to a size that allows the maximum sustainable amount of fishing? Should they be limited to stocks that may have had closures that were too early? Should they be limited to stocks that have had under-harvest over the course of several years? Also, should a sector be able to carry over more than 25% of its annual catch limit as long as it stays below the overfishing limit? That concludes the information about actions in this amendment. Now I'll finish up the presentation by talking through the amendment timeline, then move to where we can take questions and comments. This timeline shows the development steps that the ABC Control Rule Amendment has gone through. We're now in the public comment phase. The Council will review public comments and provide any final directions at the September 2022 Council Meeting in Charleston, South Carolina. Then they will consider approval for the amendment to be submitted to NOAA Fisheries in December 2022. After that, NOAA Fisheries will conduct their rulemaking process, which would put potential implementation of this amendment sometime in mid-2023. As a reminder, implementation of this amendment does not change any catch limits that are currently in place. This amendment is setting the rules and the process for the Council to set catch limits through future changes to the respective management plans. Now we will move into the questions and comments portion of the hearing. Verbal comments can be provided at the public hearing on August 24th or on September 14th during the Council Meeting's public comment session. You can also submit written comments via our online public comment form, regular mail, or by fax using the information on this slide. Written comments must be received by 5:00 PM on August 26th. Written comments submitted for the September Council Meeting must be received by September If you have any questions about the ABC Control Rule Amendment, please feel free to contact me using the information on the screen. If you have more general questions about the Council, you can contact our Public Information Officer, Kim Iverson. We look forward to hearing your questions and comments.